Okay. Welcome to the citizens. Joining us by television, we called the meeting to order to go specifically into a closed session before we started the main body of the agenda. So we're actually coming back out of a closed session, so we'll reconvene the meeting. And if I could have a motion to certify the closed session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we certify our closed session and that we talked only about what we convened in the closed session to talk about.
Second.
Judy?
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Creaker.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the work session. That'll be continued to be televised. And this work session deals with the city manager's proposed 2012 budget. And Randy, if you want to take the honors.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, purpose of the work session this evening is to review for you in summary fashion the recommended budget for the upcoming fiscal year. Members of council received a copy of this budget in your packages last Thursday afternoon. Hopefully, we've had a chance to at least review the executive summary portion. And I'm going to briefly, well, maybe not so briefly, but I'm going to hopefully adequately summarize the executive summary and talk a little bit about the process going forward and how citizens can learn more. As the council is well aware, staff is aware, and by now, the citizens are aware as well, this is the fourth consecutive difficult budget year in a row. It began mid-year and mid-fiscal year in the fall of 2008. And at that time, we saw a significant contraction of state support for city programs, for the school division. We saw challenges with local revenues as well. And we really saw in the 2008 and going into the next fiscal year, a significant contraction. And that has continued in one form or another for the next three fiscal years, including the one we're talking about now, which is the fiscal year that begins July 1st. It's important, as we talk about going into next year's budget, that we talk a little bit more about what we've done so far, beginning in 2008 and through this fiscal year. We've made already a number of difficult choices. You've made them. School boards made them. They included, over that period, employee layoffs, vacancy eliminations, program eliminations. In short, our combined approach, it really is a combined approach with the school system, is we have tried our mutual best to balance our budget within the resources we have. There has not been a general tax increase through this period, and it really sets the stage for where we're going forward. Our first attempt has always been to try to constrain our spending, especially now in the recession that not only are we feeling, but certainly our citizens and businesses are feeling as well. This year, as we started the '12 budget, the issues that were facing us were not dissimilar to those that we had faced in the development of the previous two fiscal year budgets, or also as it began in FY '08. We have increased debt service expenditures, not for debt that's been issued in the last year or so, but prior to my arrival here as city manager. We see a continuing decline in state revenue. For us, that's such things as support for our constitutional officers, for our police department. The school division saw yet another significant reduction, which I'll speak more about, in state revenue. We've had some unavoidable operational increases, and our local revenues are largely flat when taken together. That's good news in that they began this period in decline. They have stabilized. And that's, in normal times, that would just lead us to tighten the budget and go on. But it's really the continued state reductions which challenge us, because state revenue for us and for the school system is really an important part of our budget. If you can go to the next slide, please. I talked about this before, but I'll mention it one time again. During the course of this recession, which began for us in the middle of 2008, we have tried, along with the school system, to address our budget imbalances, which were largely, but certainly not solely, state revenue-driven, through reductions in the expenditure side. If you could go on to the next slide, Teresa. What I'd like to show you here is our budget. What you see graphed here is our total local budget over the period. And what you'll see is that our proposed budget in 2012 is similar to, but slightly below, the budget for 2011, the fiscal year we're in now, as at a level that is less than the budget level in 2007. And I would note, none of these numbers have been adjusted for inflation. So if we were to do that, the graph would even pop out more at you. I think what I'd like you to see, and what I'd like the citizens to understand, is that since the recession hit us in the mid-year in 2008, which is, 2008 is the highest point there for amended budget, what you can see is the combined efforts to lower expenses in relation to the reductions in revenue that we were seeing. Next slide, please, Teresa. Thank you. The budget for 2012 is very similar in many ways to 2011. There are some exceptions, and I'll speak to each one of those. But this budget before you, presented for your consideration, has no new city employees, no new programs. It is simply a more constrained version of the current year budget. And there are three exceptions, and I will speak to each one of them. But I just want people to understand that we recognize the times that we're in. There's nothing new proposed in this budget of any significance. And one other chart that maybe tells this story a little bit differently, but just historically, what you see on this chart is our full-time equivalents. This is city staffing over the period. That period began in fiscal 2003. And what you'll see now in 2011 and '12, that number is essentially the same, that we're operating at a level of staffing less than we were operating in 2002. So essentially, a decade ago. And you'll see principally, the most stark difference is, again, in response beginning in 2008, the recession and the very difficult decisions that the city council had to make as, in the days prior to my arrival here as city manager, in the days, literally, in the few days prior. I mentioned there are three significant issues that are outside of the norm in the otherwise further constrained budget. I want to address each one of them if I could. The first and most significant is real property reassessment. As the, well, I'll get to that in a second. The second is the unrest in the Middle East and the disaster in Japan. I'll talk a little bit about how that comes home to potentially affect us. And lastly, requests for school funding. Teresa, if you could, thank you. Reassessment, if you could back up one, please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. This is the first time in the history of the city that there's been a significant downward trend in reassessment. For the reassessment process, which is still ongoing, but the first phase of which is complete, and I would note as an informational note, that later this week, we will be sending the individualized assessment information to each of the property owners in the city. So they all understand how the reassessment affects the value of their property. There's also a summary that talks at a high level about the budget itself, the key dates for public involvement, and also the key dates for the reassessment and how they can learn more. So we've seen a significant reduction for the first time in the city's history. The new value of a penny, when I got here, was about $170,000. It's now $149,000. And that's, as we work through the budget, that new number has to become part of our thinking. Next slide, please, thank you. The recommended budget proposes an equalized tax rate of $0.92. At this equalized rate, we're still anticipating receiving about $140,000 less in total real estate taxes in the current year. So even at this new equalized rate, we're looking for less overall tax money from our property owners to fund this budget. And we had to, again, tuck in the corners and make some additional reductions, principally on the city side, to make that happen. And we'll talk a little bit more about that. This chart is important, and it's, reassessment is an odd thing to explain sometimes, and a chart can do a thousand words sometimes cannot. If you think about tax collection, specifically, real estate tax collection, there are three principal variables: total assessed value of the property, the tax rate, and the collection rate. Collection rate is the amount of the money that we collect in that first year that it's owed. Just because we don't collect it that first year doesn't mean we don't continue through the Treasury's office to go after it, but that's the first year collection. And you'll see, in the fiscal year that we're in now, an assessed value, and I'll approximate these, of $1.7 million, times the current tax rate and collection rate, and what's in the budget as adopted, is $13.5 million. What we've done, for purposes of helping you understand the impact of this reassessment, we've taken the new assessed value with the new assessment, and that is at a value of $1.49 billion, times the current tax rate, collection rate, and it shows you how that overall decrease in the value would affect the total estimated collection for real estate taxes. And lastly, to show you, same, the new value, times the equalized rate, times the collection rate, shows you that in this budget that I'm recommending to you, we would anticipate at that new equalized tax rate, an amount slightly less than what we collected this year. Slightly less is defined by about $139,000. The next question that I'd hope to be able to answer for you is, how does this affect the average homeowner? And the purpose of this chart is to show you, with the reassessment that was done in fiscal year 2010, so two years ago, our average assessed house value was $356,000. At $0.81, the tax levy, based on the average house at that tax rate, is $2,887. Keep in mind, real estate is our principal revenue source. To bring this recommended budget into perspective for you, the new assessed average home value is $311,100. At the proposed equalized rate, you'll see that that would have a tax levy of $2,862, which is a reduction, albeit a minor one, but a reduction in the average tax levy of about $25. That's all based on the average. And how it affects each individual will be based on their individual assessment. So I don't want to try to imply that that average can be applied to everyone, but it is the average. Another way to think about this, as we've approached it, and we talked about it in the earlier chart, if we were to maintain the current rate with the declining assessment base, we would be looking at a reduction in taxable yield, what we would estimate in the budget to support our budget, of little more than $1.6 million. That's about 19% of our discretionary general fund budget excluding the school transfer. To put that in perspective, because we're a city that has a number, well, a relatively modest number of relatively small departments, that amount of money, that $1.6 million, is an amount of local funding that equates to the local funding that is currently in the budget for Parks and Recreation, the library, Public Works, and the Commissioner's Office. Keep in mind, that's the type of impact. Just to put that in perspective, that's solely for illustrative purposes. To come at this one additional way, this is the general fund budget as proposed. And you'll see its various elements. Starting in the left, because it's the single largest line, is the school contribution at $8.653 million. That's the local contribution to schools. Going counterclockwise, operating expenses, $2.3 million. Personnel and benefits expenses, slightly more than $8 million. Debt, which is a fixed cost for us, non-discretionary items in the budget. Shared services, these are the many things that we do with York County to also include regional jail, regional detention. When you sum it all up, that's $23.1 million. That's the city's general fund budget, including the transfer to schools. We began, and there may be an extra chart or two on the slides, or with the next slide now, Teresa? I guess I need to put my glasses on.
Tax-supported.
All right. This is the tax-supported budget. What we've done is we've taken out other local revenues that come in, state revenues and other things that support the general funds. It's getting smaller. You see, this is the amount that is supported by the taxes in this city. And you can see how that breaks out. And really, this is just a stepping stone to the next chart, which takes out the non-discretionary spending that's locally tax-supported. And you see that number drops down to about $1.7 million, taken all together. And then the final chart is that portion of that original pie chart, which is tax-supported and discretionary. And even that is, we could probably pull it apart and find things within that that are less discretionary than others. But the point being, if you take out the school transfer and the things that are truly not discretionary, and confined only to tax support, that is the portion of the city budget that this $1.6 million number that I referenced before would go against. And that's how you get to 19%. The second issue, to come back to this, is what's going on in the Middle East, and then compounded by what's recently happened in Japan, as it affects our budget. And if you think for a moment, and you've seen it, we've all seen it, we've seen a pretty rapidly escalating price of gas over the last several weeks, couple of months. And we're on our way to, but we may never get to, another advent of a $4 gas period. We simply don't know. What we do know is that once gas gets up to that $4 range, and if it hovers there for a while, it begins to change people's behavior. It begins to affect the kind of vehicles that they buy. It begins to affect the valuation of what have typically been some of the higher-priced used vehicles, as demand for some of the less fuel-efficient larger vehicles goes down. The actual base, tax base for used vehicles goes down. And to try to understand this, what we did is we went to the last time that the city experienced a $4 gas period, and went to the immediately following fiscal year. This is sort of the inverse budgetarily of catch for clunkers, which happened late, and we couldn't account for it, because it had already happened by the time that you had adopted your budget, like everyone else. This is the opposite of that. This is an event that may or may not happen, but if it does, we went back and we tried to understand the impact on our tax base for personal property in the immediate following fiscal year. That would be, in this case, FY '12. We're estimating that if this $4 gas period comes, that it could affect your personal property tax base, which translates ultimately to yield, by $250,000 next fiscal year. And if it happens, it will happen post-adoption of the budget, and in the middle of a very tight budget year. And you see also, we look to see what kind of gas increases we could look for during that same period, and energy costs, again, using our previous experience as a guide. And so what this budget asks you to do is to take a portion of your undesignedated fund balance, which is in excess of your 15% portion of your fund balance guideline, and simply set it aside, not to be spent unless these circumstances actually occur. If they do occur, you've got a way to deal with it in the fiscal year. If it doesn't occur, it stays right back in the fund balance, and we certainly don't spend it if we don't need it. But the idea, since we have a strong likelihood that it's going to happen to some degree, we can either plan for it by setting some money aside, raise taxes to pay for it in an event that we're not sure is going to happen when and to what extent, or we can cut the budget further based on the same scenario. And of those three choices, I am recommending that you simply set aside that amount of money in your fund balance to see if it's necessary. If it happens and if it stays a new way of life for us, then we're going to need to deal with that permanently as part of the development of the FY '13 budget. This will give you the opportunity to do that. You'll recall in 2008, when the city first began to feel mid-year the impacts of the recession on its revenue streams, that caught us somewhat by surprise. What I'm trying to do now is to anticipate those things and to anticipate some strategies so that we're not as surprised by things that we think may be coming. The last element which is worthy of highlighting, I think, is that the superintendent, and ultimately, the school board, this reflects superintendent, because at the time it was put together, the school board was still deliberating on the superintendent's recommended budget. But the superintendent and the school board were faced yet again with another horrendous mountain to get over. About $700,000 worth of direct impact caused by the state budget. That's the reductions in revenue. That's unfunded mandates. It's all of it sort of rolled into one. In addition to that, they, like us, see changes in other revenue streams and have other non-discretionary cost increases that they needed to deal with. And they had about a million-dollar chore that they had to somehow get accomplished in order to balance their budget. And they did that. They balanced their budget without a request in local funding. They did what they needed to do in order to bring their operating budget in line. And once they were done with that, then they asked that the city council consider a modest addition to local funding. The amount is about $137,000. It matches precisely the dollar amount that the city council invested in the city's pay plan this past year. And it is intended to be used by the school board to provide modest pay adjustments to their employees next year. That request from the school board is contained in this budget, to be funded by a mixture of ongoing revenue and some fund balance, which we discussed at your last meeting. You know, again, and I don't need to speak for superintendent, she will, so will school board, but again, they had to make difficult choices, to eliminate positions, to actually implement one or more reductions in force, to make further operational and programmatic cuts. So I just want people to understand that they did all of those things before they came and asked you for money. And I don't think we could have asked for more. I don't think we could have reasonably expected more. A couple of additional slides, and then I'll wrap up. I started this presentation by saying this is the fourth year that we've had to deal with this. And we're certainly not alone. Read the newspapers, and almost every locality in Virginia is having to deal with some version of this problem. Some, not as much, some considerably more. And I don't think by any stretch of the imagination are we out of the woods yet. In 2013, which is the year beyond the one that we're talking about today, you know, we already know that we're looking at increased debt service costs, we're looking at health insurance costs, and potentially, energy costs. We talked about that. At a time when we anticipate that our local revenue, largely taken generalized, will be relatively flat to flat, and there seems to be no relief in sight with regard to the reductions that have already been made in state support, and no guarantee that the trend of recent years of continuing reductions won't continue in Richmond. So all of that is to say, we're mindful, as we prepare this budget, that 2012 and 2013, and perhaps beyond that, are going to be continued times of recessionary strain. And so as we talk about how we deal with this budget, as we go further into this process, I would just ask you to help us in by keeping in mind that this is not, unfortunately, a single-year occurrence that we have to deal with, but it's really a structural rebalancing that's happened over the past several years, and that until such time, that there's some real evidence that it's turned around, that this is really the new normal, until the normal changes. And, you know, it used to be, in years past, that you could count on certain types of revenue growth from one year to the next, simply because the economy was booming. And it may well again, but until we actually see that, it would not be responsible for us at the staff level to inject undue optimism into future revenue streams, especially as things become tighter. In order to accomplish this budget, we had to tuck the corners in even more than ever before, to maintain an equalized rate that brought in less taxes, what got us close, and did the things that we absolutely had to do, while still not adding any new positions or programs. It wasn't an easy task. Teresa worked very hard on it, and with her staff, my staff as well, superintendent and the school board. And now, the really hard work for the city council begins today for the, but I would say, for the citizens, that's really not a fair statement. We talk about budget on a regular basis with the city council, and they know, as we discussed it last year and many times in between, they know there's an ongoing problem, and that it's a challenge that we've got to face. And it's not something that we turn our attention to 60 days out of every year and hope it goes away. That's not how we've done it, nor how we will do it. Some key dates going forward. The city council will have a budget work session on the 25th in this room at 5:00 p.m., to be followed at 6:00 p.m. with a joint work session with the school board, also in this room. At 7:00 that evening, there will be public hearings on the proposed budget, proposed tax rates and fees. And there is one fee increase proposed in the budget. I'll highlight it for you now, because I don't want to forget, and have you think I somehow missed that. That is in the solid waste fund. We'll talk more about that.
Yes, sir.
On the 25th, that'll be a portion of our presentation for you. And for those of you that are interested in learning more, you can get copies online of both my budget and the school board's budget at our respective websites, at our respective offices, and both are in our library. And with that, thank you for that opportunity to present the budget.
Well, thank you very much, Randy, and I'll
Well, thank you very much, Randy, and I'll, and I guess I'll speak for council first, in congratulating both you and Teresa, as well as the school board, for bringing us a very budget, a very, a budget that's conscious of where we are as a society today. It doesn't escape me that we say there's no new programs, there's no new positions. In fact, we're at employment levels below where we were in 2000, in the early 2000s, I won't quote your year, and that we're operating, that you've brought us a budget that operates for slightly less, from the real estate perspective, than what we saw last year. And that the value of real estate, which council does not control, has dropped by 12%, yet that's a hardship on the owners, so why complicate that with an increase in taxes as well? So appreciate the bare bones budget that you've brought us. I guess it'll make some of our conversations easier. And as you said, we talked about the budget quite a bit through the last, geez, it seems like it's been ongoing since 2008. But council, do you have any questions at this time, or willing to wait until the work session? Work session?
I'll wait till the work session.
Yeah?
I'll wait.
Okay. If we could, I will ask that, I know that the meeting is, I'd like to just take a short five-minute break. Please be back here at 7:10, so we can get started again. Because for those in the viewing audience, we've been at this since about 5:00. We're going to take about five minutes, and then we'll be right back in to get going again.